Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is December 31st, 2018. I called the meeting to order it at 8:04 a.m. This is a bit of a government housekeeping meeting, so it shouldn't be long. Madam Clerk, could I have the roll call?
Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Here.
Ed Park?
Here.
Oh?
Here.
O'Shea?
Here.
Ann Park?
Yep.
Wu?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
And Borough Clerk? Everyone's present, Mayor.
Please rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on our nation, on God, in this world, with liberty, justice, and all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Kevin, motion to open up to the public?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please just come up to the microphone on the table after you're recognized by me and state your name and address. Yes.
Good morning. James DiGregorio, 155, Charles Place, Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey. I'd like some more details as to the purpose of this meeting. And I'd like some details as to the properties being purchased and the money being spent by our town, our taxpayer money being spent regarding this affordable housing.
The agenda speaks for itself as to the purpose of the meeting and as to the purchases of the property. Those have been publicly discussed in past meetings. Today, it's on the closed session, which we will go into shortly.
Do we have a plan, a detailed plan, a blueprint of the building that is proposed by the town?
Yeah, so the property's already been purchased. There is a plan. It's publicly filed. You could open that if you wish, or just go down to the, I guess, the Superior Court.
I think it would be very responsible for this governing body to make that public and actually to do a fresh review.
It should actually be on the website as well.
Oh, I didn't see it, and it should be public.
You're right, it should be public. It should, and I believe it is.
What is not in the line of this property? Is that part of this or not?
It is. I mean, it's part of the plan.
Are there going to be any alterations or dissuasions in that area?
That's in the plan also.
And how many stories is the building going to be?
That's in the plan also.
The number five, I'd like to know what the tree's deeper spiral of Englewood Cliffs is. Is this having to do with any actions, discipline actions, or?
It says Oprah on it. It's an Oprah case, to release the tapes, the Chiapi tapes.
Okay.
James Tracy filed to get the case.
Okay. I would like to make some comments as to the history of the police department. And I will actually just make the comments as to what my understanding of the root of the problem is. As I understand, many years ago, there was two people that looked up for becoming chief of police.
What year was that?
I don't know the year in particular. One was passed over.
Who was that?
I would rather make, speak in general terms.
Of course.
And since then, it seems like there has been a very...
Since when?
I'm speaking in general terms. I'm just saying, many years ago.
From the beginning of history?
I am not going to mention names, and I am not going to mention dates.
Okay, I'd just like to have substance behind what speakers are saying, so if you want to speak in generalities, then we'll listen to you in a general way as well.
I'm speaking as I understand. So basically...
What is your understanding based on?
Is this a cross-examination of me, or am I allowed to speak?
Well, you're saying, you're stating facts...
You're cross-examining me, so I think what you're trying to do is you're trying to divert, as you usually do. So I'm telling you, as I understand it, so I don't expect any questions from you during my time.
So your understanding, what is your understanding based on?
If you would stop questioning, I will continue and not waste any of your time, extra time.
Go ahead.
You're wasting time. You're wasting my time. Do not question me.
We have the rest of the year.
This is my time, okay?
Okay. Go ahead.
My understanding is that one person was passed over. Since then, that person was, that person happened to have a spouse on the council.
Who was that?
I would appreciate if you wouldn't interrupt me.
I just want to be able to follow what you're saying, so that when you conclude, I can understand what your conclusion is.
Then, what I see as very, very adverse working conditions were created for the chief of police that was chosen at the time, and the rest of the staff.
Which chief are you referring to now?
I'm going to ignore you, because you're way out of your...
Okay. Are you referring to the chief of surreptitious who made 120 recordings?
I am talking in general terms. If you want to keep on interrupting me, that's your problem. This is going to take you a lot longer to get through.
Go ahead. Go ahead. You're not recognized.
Can we just let the resident finish?
He could finish, but he's speaking in such generalities that we must be able to follow him for a lucid conversation.
Well, I think it's very obvious the reason why you are interrupting me, because what I'm speaking about is the truth, and what I'm speaking about has been the root cause...
The truth as you've been told, which is not the truth. But go ahead.
The root cause of all of the problems, as I see it, I see it, has been the adverse working conditions. And the mayor has been on tape and complaining in public about the salaries of our police officers. In fact, just a few days ago, there was a complaint about, or comment in the Bergen Record or the North Jersey publication, as soon as the acting chief was making a comment toward the mayor's father. I do believe that public employees should be treated absolutely fairly, that their salaries should not be commented on by an elected official.
That's our job, sir.
It's highly inappropriate.
That's our job.
You're interrupting me. Unfortunately, I cannot eject you for interrupting me, okay? Highly inappropriate, and I have reminded this mayor a number of times that any salary should be negotiated. If you have a problem with how much people are making, that is done professionally at the negotiating table. That's just been one small piece of evidence of the harassment that this department has gone under. And it has been, basically, I feel that most of the department, if not all, they have been working under terrible, adverse conditions. And I think that was caused by an elected mayor who basically has been out of control these last few years. I would like to see this litigation on another topic...
Which litigation?
I would like to see the litigation that has been mentioned here. First of all, I'd like to see all of the police litigation be resolved very, very quickly, and I'd like to see that...
I'm sure they will be.
I'd like to see that this all be left in the rearview mirror, and that people that have worked for many, many years get what they deserve. And I'd like to see that this, I'd like to make it very, very clear that these working conditions in this police department have been just terrible these last few years, and that has been, the cause of that has been primarily Mayor Mario Kranjak and his vendetta, personal vendetta with a former councilwoman against the police department. And I do believe that they should be making what they deserve and what they've negotiated, and that any further comments be held to themselves and you negotiate at the negotiating table.
So you want to hide information from the public?
You form a committee, and you negotiate at the negotiating table.
Everything will be open. Nothing's private. Nothing's confidential. Salaries are open. Gloria and Ed gave the police department a very high salary as the chief as well, and those salaries are just not sustainable. And Mr. DiGregorio, you're speaking as a public...
Our lawsuits are not sustainable, Mayor.
Well, frivolous lawsuits are not, yes.
Your lawsuits are not sustainable.
I don't have any lawsuits. I haven't brought any lawsuits. So here's the thing, you need to make sure that...
All employees need to be treated fairly and treated with respect.
You're absolutely right.
With dignity.
You're right, and so should the taxpayers. The taxpayers should be respected as well.
And there should be no circumstance where an employee feels compelled to protect themselves one way or another. It has been a horrible working condition...
What's so horrible about it?
...that any person, any person...
Specifically, though, what's so horrible about it specifically? Stop, you know, stop howling to the moon. Just tell me what is specifically so horrible about working in the Englewood Cliffs Police Department?
I would like to see in this town some out-of-the-box thinking. I would like to see some innovation. I would like to see our town setting the example for other towns, not through infighting and petty arguments that turn into expensive lawsuits.
Thank you.
I would like to see this town lead. I'd like to see this town innovate, and I think we have a good chance of that in the future. I do think that there are certain quality of life issues that I'd like to bring up before I conclude. One of the big problems in this town, again, it was caused by, as I understand it, a former councilperson, where another person was harassed, this happened to be a reporter, a reporter of the Northern Valley Press, I believe. It's the, not the Suburbanite Paper, the other paper. That reporter was threatened, as I understand, and fired from the paper. Ever since then, that paper has hardly ever reported anything on Englewood Cliffs. The paper is a small paper. I think local press is very important. I know there's a reporter here today, and I'm very happy because we need to have that fourth estate report. That said, those papers are thrown on driveways, and a lot of them are thrown on driveways without people living in the houses. I'd like to see a solution to that. Those papers are going down the drain literally, down the sewer literally, and it is a problem, and I think we need to address that type of... a solution that we can have. So that's what quality of life issue that I'd like to address, and I think that we can do a lot more out-of-the-box things in the future, state-of-the-art recycle center and other things as far as that goes. So with that, I will conclude my comments. Thank you for your time, and again, I will remind the governing body that they should make this the best place for any municipal or state or worker to work. It should be a desired and a kind of place to work, and harassment in this body should be a thing of the past. Thank you very much, and I wish everyone a very Happy New Year, and I'll see you on the third floor.
Thank you for your generalities. Just to clarify, when you're ready to be courageous and be specific, come back and be specific. I want to be fair to taxpayers also, and, you know, our employees are well taken care of. We respect them. We thank them. We express gratitude. Oftentimes, they don't express it back. Instead, we get lawsuits. The economics of municipal government are such that taxpayers have been taken advantage of for many years. Gloria and Ed approved contracts that are just not sustainable for our police department and our police chief in the past. We're trying to rectify that situation, but be fair to everybody. Now, the gentleman who spoke, I believe, is just a, is also a member of the Public Workers' Union, so I forgive him for the slant of his discussion and the targeting of the mayor. However, again, we need to be fair to taxpayers, and that's what everyone seems to always run on in this town, but no one ever actually does until I became mayor, William Wu became councilperson, Mark Park, Mary O'Shea, Carol McMorrow. We're all for transparency. If you listen to what the gentleman that just spoke said, he wants all negotiations and material terms of agreements not discussed in public.
I didn't see it.
That's abhorrent to me.
It was words in my mouth.
That's abhorrent. We're here to be transparent, and I understand that on the one hand, you want things your way, but on the other hand, you don't want the taxpayers to know what it is.
No, I understand.
The taxpayers have an absolute right, wouldn't everybody understand us, agree, to have all the information available to them so they could determine who should be sitting up here? Okay, thank you. Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Forlorn Drive. I do not believe that Chiapi's working conditions have been adverse. In fact, I doubt that they have been unreasonably favorable. I do not believe any other town in the state of New Jersey would have ignored all of the allegations and lawsuits filed under the previous administration. Allegations of assault on the police chief, allegations of sending a person with improper equipment into a burning building, allegations of covering up sexual abuse of the mind. I believe they all would have been investigated. I think those are very favorable working conditions for a police officer or police chief, unreasonably favorable ones. I believe we should have a good working environment for our employees, but that includes not being expected to do favors for certain officials. I do not believe that under the previous administration, things were rosy. They were really rosy until one of the insiders, but as someone who is victimized by one of the insiders, who had a lot of property damage because the building codes weren't followed and zoning codes weren't followed, I don't think it is so wonderful at all. And I expect unfortunately that with five Democrats, it becomes a go-back-to-the-old ways, you know, favors for their friends and screwing everyone else.
So in comment to that, and I think what Mr. DiGregorio, who spoke earlier, misses, and a lot of people miss also, is that the problem is not me as mayor. The problem is the fact that the police department has become an extension of a political party. Mr. Moans is sitting in the back row. She actually approved a contract for her brother when she was on council and the head of the Democratic Party in town to be the chief, okay? So she approved that. So the problem with the town is, and I didn't intend to go in this direction today, but we're here because Mr. DiGregorio brought it here, and I thank you for that, because it needs to be brought out and repeated over and over. The problem is that the police department, up until October at least, or November, beginning of November, was an extension, was an extension of the Democratic Party, and we're going to deal with that in 2019. And, you know, it's going to be unpleasant for some people, but we're dealing with it. Yes.
Governor Seaborn, House of Representatives, who, I'm trying to understand why it's the 73rd birthday, and I'm sitting here, and we have all this pending litigation that results in closed session to discuss, that we voted on while myself and Jimmy Saul are sitting up here, and why we're still sitting on this side, and this discussion is even happening? How could this possibly be possible? Are you making final decisions today regarding all this pending litigation?
We're following the rules, all the rules.
Are you making final decisions regarding this litigation today in closed session? Do you think that is fair or correct?
No, we're not actually.
As a councilman?
Relax, relax, relax. We're not, we're following the rules, number one.
Rules that may be...
Number two, the Roberts Rules of Order, okay? We're bringing up to date in closed session as we're entitled to, because you're not on this council yet.
All right.
We will be, we will be bringing everyone up to date as a status update on certain of these litigations and developments, and when you're up here, you'll be told that as well.
And Mary O'Shea.
They're members of the council?
I understand, but why do they need to be brought up to date?
Business doesn't, business doesn't stop because a new council member is coming up.
I understand. This is a special meeting.
So that's what we do.
This is a special...
The housekeeping aspects of it are approval of minutes, okay?
I understand. That's what it is.
I understand your angst at not being up here, but really, I still have to follow the rules, okay?
I'm not upset that I'm not there. People voted for me. I will be up there 24 hours.
It's really, that's fine, but we're, you want us to just stop and wait for you?
I'm just asking.
Should I have done that a year ago?
Mayor, you don't have to stop and wait for me. I will be up there. I will be up there. My voice will be heard.
I want your voice to be heard.
But I really don't think you do.
Of course I do, because then you're going to see what it's like being up here.
Oh, I welcome it. I welcome it.
I hope you enjoy it as much as I have.
I just, I just think this thing...
It's an eye-opener.
Litigation.
Why? A litigation goes on.
I hope so. I'll be on that side, and I'll be able to understand why you feel it so negative and nauseous.
I have a duty, I have a duty to run government.
Side of that day...
That's not true. That's not true. I have a duty to, I have a duty to run this town. I don't have a duty to wait for you to get up here to run the town, okay?
I don't have a duty to run this town. This council has a duty to run this town.
Well, there's, no, I think you need to understand, there's an allocation of power. There's an allocation of power, and somebody has to be the leader here, and it's me.
We don't have the power anymore, so there we go.
Gloria just told me she's running for mayor again.
Well, I didn't see that.
Yes.
Well, you're just helping the people.
You know what? The video speaks for itself, Mary. Because we wanted them on.
It does. Hold that thought, Ellen, because October 10th is very relevant to the video.
Yes, yes. We see that.
And for that matter, I think you do have a lawsuit against Chiapi that you filed personally in November for transparency reasons. Let's call it what it is, okay?
Oh, so you're not being honest with me?
That's right. Exactly. I have no lawsuits. Sure you do. You just filed one lawsuit.
See, Chiapi filed a lawsuit against me many times.
No, this is for your own...
Yeah, Ms. Geiger's got the floor. Yes, Ms. Geiger.
All of a sudden, I have four?
It's all yours.
Okay. Karen Geiger, 270, Alpharetta. Openness, transparency. I put in several Oprah requests during the last week, and redactions were made to those requests, which are not compliant with the State Open Public Records Act. And I understand that those redactions were reviewed by the borough attorney. So I want to know, under what basis you are reviewing simple Oprah requests and having redactions made that cause the responses to be virtually mean?
Can you be specific?
Which Oprah? Which Oprah? Every single one that I submit.
That's not accurate.
How many have you submitted?
I don't count, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
And let's not, let's not divert once again.
Can you be specific?
Can I just, just...
The Oprah where I asked for the RFQs, you said that they were unavailable. That is not true. There is no proprietary or competitive advantage that is given to any bidder that because the bidding was closed, the period in which they could submit bids was closed, and the amount of what someone bid for an RFQ is public information. It is a public bidding process. And further, when you do a redaction or refuse to give something in its totality, you have to itemize item by item according to the Public Open Records Act. Why each item that you are redacting is being redacted.
If you put it at the Borough Council to answer you.
I want to finish what I say, and then she can answer me.
You're perfect.
And the blanket decision not to give any information is against the law. Please explain.
Okay, so the Oprah was for the RFQs from the December 5th RFQ, and there were no redactions done? There was a refusal...
No, there's no redactions denied.
Okay, because you started with redaction, and...
Well, there's enough of that as to...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I don't have any immediate memory of redactions for the multiple Oprahs that you put in and everyone else in this town puts in. I haven't done redactions in quite a while, so maybe you could enlighten me. But with respect to the RFQs, the reason for the denial is that the pending, there is a second pending RFQ, and appointments need to be made. That's why, under the public contract law, there was an open bidding process. I'm sorry, there was a bidding process on December 5th. There was a second bidding process on December 19th. No appointments have been made yet. If you want each and every individual RFQ, we will look at each and every individual RFQ and see if there are redactions. You are correct. You should, we should give you the RFQs with the proposals for the hourly rates redacted. That's what we should do.
And when am I going to get them? After you've made the appointments?
No.
You can't evaluate them?
No, 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 because...
Today?
When?
Today? Or you do me?
Well, excuse me. I don't know how many were received.
I don't know.
So, and you know, so, yeah, but we can't redact on a CD, right?
There's nothing that has to be redacted.
Yes.
It's closed bidding.
The proposal price...
Bidding is closed.
Yes, I understand.
Closed. It's public. Unless they have specifically said in their RFQ that it's proprietary information or that disclosure of the information would prejudice them, and I'm quoting from various lawsuits, that information is public. I want a copy of those RFQs.
All right. Ms. Geiger, I will take your position under advisement, and I will work with the borough clerk and the borough administrator to give you the December 5th RFQs. Redacted or not, I'll make a decision individually.
When?
When, when did you receive a response? Yesterday, today?
Oh, last week.
Last week.
Well, look, it's December 31st.
So it's December 31.
All right. We're making it all new because the decisions are all going to be made on January 3rd, so let's not go further. You're talking about transparency. I'm just making the point that you have done everything in your power to not have transparency with what's going on, and this is just another example. The other item is when I asked for information regarding emails between the mayor and the new police chief regarding overtime, and countless redactions. No reason for it, just...
Nothing to worry.
I'm just moving on. Another item. The council has 20...
All right, so I didn't do any redactions on that Oprah, because I don't think it came across my desk. Thank you.
Good, so that's not your fault?
Well, I don't know.
Somebody should be reviewing borough...
I don't know that there's any fault. I don't know if there's any fault to point the finger at. You're making a statement, and I'm just...
I'm making a statement that there were impermissible redactions on that.
Okay. The borough clerk does the redaction. The borough, the borough clerk...
It's not by the borough clerk, because I asked her.
Okay. So I'm glad you know more than me from the borough clerk, but at this moment in time, it's the borough clerk's job to make redactions. If the borough attorney tells her, then it's the borough attorney's direction. If the borough administrator had redactions, I am assuming that the borough clerk did her job and asserted that the, assured that the redactions were appropriate. So I don't know what's in those emails, but if you need it to be reviewed all over again...
No, I don't need to spend any more of the borough's funds going through countless ridiculous...
Well, we do that all the time for you. But hold on a second.
The question, the Oprah.
Hold, hold, hold on.
I thought, my clerk...
The clerk could answer your question. If you want an answer, our municipal clerk could answer your question, please.
The borough clerk did answer my question.
No, no, I asked... I guess privately she answered your question.
No, publicly. I went to Borough Hall and...
No, I want it to be, I want it to be done, I want...
Okay, let everyone know what it was.
I want it to be done publicly, please.
Please.
Mrs. Geiger came to Borough Hall to question some of the Oprahs, and I had her meet with the borough administrator, James Barberio, but she did ask me why I made...
...who, um, I'm trying to understand why the semi-thirds first. And I'm sitting here and we have all this pending litigation that results in closed session to discuss that we voted on while myself and Jimmy Saul are sitting up here and while we're still sitting on this side and this discussion is even happening. But how could this possibly be housebroken? Are you making final decisions today regarding all this pending litigation?
We're following the rules. All the rules.
Are you making final decisions regarding this litigation today in closed session? Do you think that it's fair or unfair?
No, we're not actually.
As a councilman?
Relax, relax, relax. We're not, we're following the rules, number one. Number two, the Robert's Rules of Order, okay? We're bringing up to date in closed session as we're entitled to, because you're not on this council yet.
All right.
We will be, we will be bringing everyone up to date as a status update on certain of these litigations and developments. And when you're up here, you'll be told that as well.
And Mario Shane.
They're members of the council?
I understand, but why do they need to be brought up to date?
Business doesn't, business doesn't stop because a new council member is coming up.
I understand, this is special meeting.
So that's what we do.
Yeah, this is a special.
The housekeeping aspects of it are approval of minutes, okay?
I understand, that's what it is.
I understand your angst at not being up here, but really, I still have to follow the rules, okay?
I'm not upset that I'm not there. People voted for me, I will be up there 24 hours.
It's really, that's fine, but we're, you want us to just stop and wait for you? Like, should I have done that a year ago?
Ma'am, you don't have to stop and wait for me, I will be up there. I will be up there, my voice will be heard.
I want your voice to be heard.
But I really don't think you do.
Of course I do, because then you're going to see what it's like being up here.
Oh, I welcome it, I welcome it.
I hope you enjoy it as much as I have.
I just, I just think this thing.
It's an eye-opener.
Litigation.
Why? A litigation goes on.
I hope so, I'll be on that side and I'll be able to understand why you feel it so necessary.
I have a duty, I have a duty to run government.
That's not true, that's not true.
I have a duty to, I have a duty to run this town, just, I don't have a duty to wait for you to get up here to run the town, okay?
You don't have a duty to run this town, this council has authority to run this town.
Well, there's, no, I think you need to understand, there's an allocation of power, there's an allocation of power, and somebody has to be the leader here, and it's me.
We don't have the power anymore, so, there we go.
Laurie O'Leary just told me she's running for mayor again.
Well, I didn't say that.
Yes.
You know what, the video speaks for itself, Mario. Just we wanted them on.
It does. Hold that thought, Ellen, because October 10th is very relevant to the video.
Yes, yeah, we see that.
And for that matter, I think you do have a lawsuit against Choppie that you filed personally in November, so it's for transparency reasons, let's call it what it is, okay?
Oh, so you're not being honest with us?
That's right, exactly, I have no lawsuit, sure you do, you just filed one lawsuit.
See, Choppie filed a lawsuit against me, many times.
No, this is for your own law.
Yeah, Ms. Geiger's got the floor, yes, Ms. Geiger.
All of a sudden, I have the floor?
It's all yours.
Okay. Uh, Karen Geiger, 270 Alford. Openness, transparency. I put in several Oprah requests during the last week and redactions were made to those requests which are not compliant with the State Open Public Records Act. And I understand that those redactions were reviewed by the borough attorney. So I want to know, under what basis you are reviewing simple Oprah requests and having redactions made that cause the responses to be virtually mean?
Can you be specific?
Which Oprah?
Which Oprah? Every single one that I submit.
That's not accurate. How many have you submitted?
I don't count, Ms. Mayor, and let's not, let's not divert once again.
Can you be specific?
Can I just?
Yes, the Oprah where I asked for the RFQs, you said that they were unavailable. That is not true, there is no proprietary or competitive advantage that is given to any bidder that because the bidding was closed, the, um, period in which they could submit bids was closed, and the amount of what someone bid for an RFQ is public information, it is a public bidding process. And further, when you do a redaction or refuse to give something in its totality, you have to itemize item by item according to the Public Open Records Act. Why each item that you are redacting is being redacted.
If you put it in the Borough Council to answer you.
I want to finish what I say, and then she can answer me. And the blanket decision not to give any information is against the law. Please explain.
Okay, so, the Oprah was for the RFQs from the December 5th RFQ, and there were no redactions done, there was a refusal?
No, there's no redactions denied.
Okay, because you started with redactions.
Well, there's another one that has to be checked.
And, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I don't have any immediate memory of redactions for the multiple, uh, Oprahs that you put in and everyone else in this town put in. I haven't done redactions in quite a while, so maybe you could enlighten me. But with respect to the RFQs, the reason for the denial is that the pending, there is a second pending RFQ and appointments need to be made. That's why, under the public contract law, there, there, there was an open bidding process, I'm sorry, there was a bidding process on December 5th, there was a second bidding process on December 19th. No appointments have been made yet. If you want each and every individual RFQ, we will look at each and every individual RFQ and see if there are redactions. You are correct, you should, we should give you the RFQs with the proposals for the hourly rates redacted, that's what we should do.
And when am I going to get them? After you've made the appointments?
No.
Can't evaluate them?
No, 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 because, um, when.
Today? Or you do, me?
Well, excuse me, uh, I don't know how many were received.
Never mind.
So, and, and you know, so, yeah, but we can't redact on a CD, right?
There's nothing that has to be redacted.
Yes.
It's closed bidding.
The proposal price.
Bidding is closed.
Yes, I understand.
Closed. It's public, they, unless they have specifically said in their RFQ that it's proprietary information or that disclosure of the information would prejudice them, and I'm quoting from various lawsuits, that information is public. I want a copy of those RFQs.
All right, Ms. Geiger, I will take your position under advisement, and I will work with the borough clerk and the borough administrator to give you the December 5th RFQs. Redacted or not, I'll make a decision individually.
When?
Um, when, when did you receive a response? Yesterday, today?
Oh, last week.
Last week?
Well, look, it's December 31st.
So, it's December 31.
All right, we're making it all moot because the decisions are all going to be made on January 3rd, so let's not go further. You're talking about transparency, I'm just making the point that you have done everything in your power to not have transparency with what's going on, and this is just another example. The other item is when I asked for information regarding emails between the mayor and the new police chief regarding overtime and countless redactions, no reason for it, just.
Nothing to worry.
I'm just moving on. Another item, um, the council has twice.
All right, so I didn't do any redactions on that Oprah, because I don't think it came across my desk, thank you.
Good, so that's not your fault.
Well, I don't know.
Somebody should, should be reviewing.
I don't know that there's any fault, I don't know if there's any fault to, to point the finger at. You're making a statement and I'm just.
I'm making a statement that there were impermissible redactions on that.
Okay, the borough clerk does the redaction, the borough, the borough clerk.
It's not by the borough clerk, because I asked her.
Okay, so I'm glad you know more than me from the borough clerk, but at this moment in time, it's the borough clerk's job to make redactions. If the borough attorney tells her, then it's the borough attorney, uh, direction. If the borough administrator had redactions, I am assuming that the borough clerk did her job and, and asserted that the, assured that the redactions were appropriate. So I don't know what's in those emails, but if you need it to be reviewed all over again.
No, I don't need to spend any more of the borough's funds going through countless ridiculous evidence.
Well, we do that all the time for you, but hold on a second.
The question, excuse me, excuse me.
Hold, hold, hold on, the, the clerk could answer your question. The clerk, if you want an answer, our municipal clerk could answer your question, please.
The borough clerk did answer my question.
No, no, I asked.
I guess privately she answered your question.
No, publicly, I went to Borough Hall and.
No, I want it to be, I want it to be done, I want.
Let everyone know what it was.
I want it to be done publicly, please.
Please.
Mrs. Geiger came to Borough Hall to question some of the Oprahs, and I had her meet with the borough administrator, James Barberio, but she did ask me why I made the redactions, and I answered her honestly that the redactions were made by the officer in charge, Officer Hill. So, I, when he gave me the Oprahs, they were already redacted, other, in other words, I didn't even see them.
Okay, so it could be a public safety issue, but you don't know?
No.
Okay.
Whatever, I gave her.
Are you questioning them any further, or are you withdrawing your objections?
I'm making a statement.
Okay.
That there is a consistent policy on the part of this administration not to give out information that should be given to the public.
That is inaccurate, there is no consistent policy when it comes to Oprah, every single Oprah.
That's why you've been offered a town twice to be in violation of Oprah by the Superior Court.
There was one.
Actually, three times, the third time is on this list in the Tracy litigation where you have been fined because of it. So let's move on.
Yeah, well, let me just say this.
Let's move on because it's my floor.
Let me say this, now, I'll give you more time, but, uh, in terms of the policy, we have a policy of transparency, we give everybody everything they're entitled, it's just that you're always asking for way, way, way too much, okay? You are not part of the government, you think you are, but you're not.
I'm not part of the government, and I don't choose to be at this point in time. Next, Mr. Mura, well, Captain Mura. Twice the borough has refused to modify the settlement agreement. I want to know, has the state pension board been advised that the borough has not modified that agreement?
Jamie Dina?
Not that I know of, no.
When is the?
Well, she, yeah.
It happened twice, two weeks ago and two weeks and a month before that.
No, there wasn't a vote the month before that.
Yes, there was. Yes, there was.
There were, there were, because you.
Because it didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
Is somebody notifying pension board that Mr. Mura, that the council has not approved the amendment to the settlement agreement, that you?
No.
Other, no, when are you doing this?
The Democratic council next, next year gets to deal with it.
Excuse me?
If you want to enforce the settlement, it's not the pension board, you have to go to the Superior Court of New Jersey and the Honorable Christine Farrington, who handled the matter last February.
The matter?
And put us into the position that we are in. Excuse me, you're interrupting me with respect to the settlement agreement. It is, there is a, excuse me, there is a term in the settlement that says, if he can't apply for the voluntary dis, involuntary disability application, he needs to file a, a regular retirement application.
Then fifteen days of denying.
Yeah, yes, I understand. They are not going to deny it.
Because they don't know that you have not appro, have not disapproved the settlement agreement addendum, which you told them that you were going to get passed.
We'll just have the problem.
No one told the pension board anything.
Really? That's not what the Oprah communications show between the pension board and Ruderman's attorney, Eileen Horn, or Ellen Horn, whatever.
Okay, so, whatever, whatever you're reading, or whatever you're concluding, it is unfortunate that the addendum was not agreed to so that the disability application that he qualifies for could be processed, and now the litigation will continue because the addendum was in fact not approved.
Excuse me?
Excuse me, excuse me, you're interrupting me. So, from here, from here, it's not a false narrative, from here, I or the new borough attorney come January will have to advise the mayor and council on what their choices are in closed session, and a decision will have to be made, and it will involve litigation.
Oh, my goodness, that you've really shied away from that.
No, we haven't shied away from it, we've been sued, this borough has been sued, and this council has been sued.
I'm wondering why, I'm sorry.
And the great bulk of the litigations have been dismissed as without merit, so, there you go.
Well, here we go, let's go on.
Name one lawsuit that's been won.
Oh, let's see, Tracy versus the Borough of Englewood Cliffs.
Yes, that's subject to appeal.
Anglewood Cliffs, PBA Local versus the Borough of Anglewood Cliffs.
Also subject to appeal.
Well, everything is subject to your resident, please.
I'm just explaining to her.
You said name two, there are two.
No, let me just say this about the, are you finished?
I want to continue, no, I'm not finished.
What else do you have?
I have a lot to say.
You seem very upset this morning, what else do you have to say?
I'm upset this morning, I'm upset that we have a meeting at 8:00 AM for no reason, but let's go on with that. Mura versus the pension board. Twice, I'm going on, twice.
What lawsuit is that? I don't, I'm not aware of Mura versus the pension board.
I'm saying right now, the issue that I just brought up about Mura and the state pension board. There is, there is documentation going back to April of 2000, of April of this year stating that an amend, that if an amendment is approved by the council, the pension board will move forward on the application, and without that amendment, they would not. So I want to know, given that the clock is ticking, why you, as the mayor and council, have not proceeded to notify the pension board that that amendment has not been approved so that they can take whatever action they deem to be appropriate, period. Right now, we are continuing to have someone on the payroll, week after week, until this mayor and council acts. And by the way, Judge Barrington's opinion dealt with the decision of the borough to take him off the payroll on October 1st. It did not deal with whether or not he was entitled to a disability retirement and what those requirements are.
Yes, but she didn't follow the settlement agreement with respect to the limitations on the captain's salary.
That's your.
No, that's just the truth.
That's your opinion.
She did not follow the settlement agreement with respect to the captain's salary.
There's one more fact point that everybody should be aware of, there's a fact point which is that we were hoping to work it out with Captain Mura. Unfortunately, uh, his attorney passed away in the interim, and, and, please be respectful, Ms. Geiger, somebody lost their life.
That's unfortunate.
Somebody passed away, and it's not funny, okay? So what we want to do is try to speak to Captain Mura's new attorney, Mr. Zayas passed away unfortunately, may rest in peace, back in, I think, October, November, so.
Okay. Going to the cases that are on the agenda, the PBA versus the borough, Tracy versus the Borough of Anglewood Cliffs. Um, you, I believe in that you were directed to prepare a bond index for submission to the court within seven days, I'd like to know, has that bond index been prepared and submitted to the court because seven days have passed?
Just, um, let me, I don't know the answer to that, but let me be clear about that Oprah lawsuit. That Oprah lawsuit is actually something I want it to happen, I want all those tapes out. Now, unfortunately for Lieutenant Tracy, he thinks those tapes are going to be helpful to him in his litigations, uh, and I think it's somewhat ironic that the references to him in those tapes are, are less than flattering, and certainly, uh, inviting the chief and others who were pushing him to sue us. So, I'm very happy that those tapes will come out, that you will all, and everybody at home can listen to them, uh, and now you'll actually know what actually happened in this town over the last three years.
I look forward to it, and I look forward to not having them interpreted correctly or incorrectly by selected members of the council, and I look forward to hearing them in full and in context.
You will get to hear all the.
Appropriate decisions for myself.
You will get to hear, you will.
For myself, not colored by your slant interpretation.
You will get to hear all the, all the racist speech, you will get to hear all the sexually harassing speech.
You shouldn't talk anything about.
You will get to hear that all the sexually abusive speech, for yourself.
For myself. But right now, what I want to know is, was that bond index prepared?
It's. Excuse me, we have no response to you at this time.
Oh, so for this lawsuit, that the mayor is happy that it's taking place so that we in the public, you are not going to comment on whether you have met the requirements of the, of the court?
It's not for this mayor and council to do, that's one of the reasons we have a closed session today.
I would think that given that being hearing took place on the 21st.
Right, I should have had the council come on the 24th.
You should have had the mayor and council authorize.
Okay, please move on.
Yes.
Emails, and we've copied some of the court orders.
You should be the borough attorney.
If I wanted to be a borough attorney, I would have gotten a law degree eight years ago, thank you, and it's. Next, um, your bills, received your company's, your bills, yours, Mrs. Wazudo.
Yes.
Your bills, eighty-three thousand dollars worth of bills. Um, can you tell me where these bills paid?
Yes, the mayor and council approved them at the last, at the last meeting.
Okay, then I'm going to ask questions about them. Who signed off on the invoices for those bills? Who won the council? Who reviewed them?
I reviewed them and I called them, but apparently they got through somehow.
You reviewed them after the mayor and council approved them? Yeah.
No, no, I reviewed them after.
The mayor.
I called to, or emailed the, they emailed the council, come down and sign.
Let's just get the timeline straight here.
You reviewed them after the mayor and council approved them.
And then what, and what authority, and what authority did you have, Ed, to go try to pull something that was already approved by council?
Same as every other council.
That, that, no, no, that's before the vote, that's before the vote, your actions are ultra-virus.
They weren't supposed to be on the agenda, James told me they were not on it.
Okay, so, all you need.
Somehow they magically.
I called you, right, well, magic, I don't know what magic is about it, but I did call you, I did call you, and you didn't call me back?
They called you back.
I'm sorry, I didn't receive a call from you.
Yes, I sure did.
Okay, but regardless, all you gotta do is call me if, if you had a question.
What's that have to do with it?
Right.
I suppose that just because of the.
You don't have authority to pull anything after it's been voted, you're acting in an ultra-virus action.
What's ridiculous?
I have a comment.
What's ridiculous?
What's far as anybody else you want?
No, you don't, no, you don't, absolutely not. No, you, you acted outside of your scope of authority.
So you said, was approved on December 12?
Excuse me, I have, I have a question and a comment.
Yes, you can.
At the last, um, mayor council meeting, uh, the claims were approved, the next day, we get an email from James Barberio, the administrator, for us to come in and sign the claims. So once again, things were done backwards. You were supposed to sign off on claims, then approve them, not the other way.
I only responded on the email to the council because, um, the finance sent emails out prior.
Before.
Before, and I was only responding to that.
But if the members have a habit of not signing.
Excuse me, I'm speaking now, Anne Marie, please do not interrupt.
I had nothing to do with it.
Please do not interrupt.
Okay, I had nothing to do with it.
Please do not interrupt, I have the floor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, um.
You don't want somebody to get paid?
Excuse me, mayor.
Go ahead.
Are you having a bad morning?
No, it sounds like everybody else is now, I'm actually.
Well, it certainly sounds like you're having a bad morning.
I'm having a fine morning. I get to sit with Ms. Geiger, with the D. Gregorio, that's great.
Okay, can I speak now?
Go ahead, I'm waiting.
So, James, what is the protocol about signing off on claims and approving them?
Well, once they're signed off, they go down and get paid.
They have to be signed off first, right?
Right, and they get, they go down and get paid.
Okay, so question for you, at the last mayor council meeting, were the claims signed before we approved them? None of them were signed because the next day we got email.
No, they weren't signed, that's right, they weren't signed by.
So how do we approve claims that were not signed? It was your job to tell us that were, they were not signed.
No, and you got emails from the finance department to come down and sign them.
There were seven emails, but.
But if you don't come down and sign them.
But how do we know if none of us went down to sign them if you don't bring that up at the mayor council meeting?
Well, because, first, first and foremost, you get an email, this is always the way it's been working since I've been here, you get an email from the finance department saying, come down and sign off on the, I guess the vouchers, whatever it is over there. And that's how it's always been since I've been here. And most of the times, the council members come down and sign them.
Well, you know what, you, you said the operative word, no, you said the operative, most of the times, but that one time at the mayor council meeting, nobody came, nobody came to sign, but yet you didn't bring that up, and we, we approved claims.
First and foremost.
Mr. Barberio, go ahead and finish, and if she interrupts you again, just wait for her to finish, continue, okay?
I get the complaints from the finance department constantly that the council doesn't come down to sign any of the checks, or any of the information that you're requesting, constantly. You, you get the emails from, from the finance department, not from me, I only followed up only because finance asked me to follow up. That's, that's how that, that, that transaction took place.
Anne Marie did a resolution one time, because this happened once before, Carol pulled the councilwoman, Carol pulled the, um, the check.
At the, at the council meeting?
And by recollection, if you read in a resolution, because no one had signed the, signed the, um, same thing happened, same thing happened.
No, well, okay, one time, Ellen questioned one of my bills, that bill was pulled in open public session, I reviewed it with her, and then it went on the next agenda. That happened, I don't know about something.
Again, the question is, how can we approve, in other words, nothing was signed, and yet we approved it.
Exactly.
At the regular meeting.
Yes.
How is that possible, especially when we were not informed of the fact that none of the, it was signed?
So, so, I guess you need to fix your procedures with your finance department and your borough administrator. Let me say this, I was not aware that no one signed, there were like $2 million of bills, and you're telling me you all approved them, no one questioned the mayor and council, the finance department is continually complaining that no one comes.
All of us, no one signed, and yet it was still on the agenda.
No, there was time, Mark Park came down.
No one signed it, but yet the, uh, the administrator didn't, didn't bring that up at the meeting.
Okay, so what would you like to do, would you, would you like to revoke the $2 million that was approved?
Can I just say one thing?
Hold, hold, hold on a second, everybody.
Please let me make one thing clear, ma'am, if you don't mind.
Good.
From what I understand, the finance department sends a bill list to the council members.
No.
No, well, I thought they did.
All right, here's the problem, guys. Well, people on council didn't do their jobs, and they're criticizing, except for a couple people, Mark, and they're criticizing Anne Marie for doing her job as council, Jamie for doing his job as borough administrator, and the finance department. Everybody did their jobs except you guys didn't show up.
What about Bill Wu, he didn't show up either, or Mario Shane, she didn't show up either.
Well, yeah, yeah, we.
Well, she did.
Well, listen, council, if you're up here, you need to do your job.
We're talking about procedure, following procedures, you can't put something on for approval that has not been signed off.
Ed, I, um, just for the record, I, I've signed off on, I would say, ten of the twelve months this year, I went in for signing, okay? This is probably, probably, this is the only time I was not able to go in. Usually, the process was it before the council meeting, she usually brings the stash if there's ones that are unsigned, right? In this case, I don't know why there was not.
No, uh, Bill, um, for November, I did bring the bills because I went to sign them, and only one signature, uh, was on the claim, so I brought them over to the meetings. I would have assumed that the administrator would have told us if none of them or only one signature was on the claim, but you sat there at the last meeting, didn't bring it up, and.
Well, councilwoman, I would assume... I would assume that the council will come down and sign them.
Councilwoman, no.
And not... No, 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 that's all I'm trying to say. I'm trying to, because I know you'd be accusatory. And I don't appreciate that.
Hold on a second.
Exactly, Jamie, you...
Councilwoman, no, you brought them over, you didn't do your job. Do you have anything else to say? Because we need to get to the...
What do you mean, I didn't do my job?
All right, I'm finished.
Of course I do.
I'm not the messenger.
James, you have two more minutes, then we got to get going.
You gave me more time?
No, no. Yeah, you already had twenty, so you got two more.
Terrific. Here we go. Okay, so, you're saying that two-point-nine million dollars worth of claims of this borough was not approved, was not reviewed and signed off on by any council person? And you, as the borough administrator, allowed those bills to be presented to the council and approved and adopted without notifying them? That no one signed off on those bills? That is an elected official who has the fiduciary responsibility to do that?
And they know that every month.
Excuse me, I'm not...
Every month, they know that.
All right, I'm going to ask you to finish because you're bringing in accurate...
I'm not bringing in accurate.
You are. You are, you're bringing unfair to our employees.
I am not, I am summarizing this comment. James Barberio sat here, had bills presented to the council, and did not notify them that none of those bills had been approved by the council members, by two council members as required by our proceedings.
Okay, is there any...
I want to clarify that.
That's not accurate. Is there anyone else in the public wishes to be heard?
I have four questions. You're interrupting me.
No, you've had enough time.
Oh, no, I haven't. The suit that was in court. There was a stenographer there at the suit on the PBA suit. Who pays for that stenographer?
I don't know, it's closed session.
Not closed session, so that's bad.
No, 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 no. The lawyer from Mark Ruderman's office that represents the borough has a hearing disability. She cannot hear. That stenographer is not for purposes of creating a certified court-hand reporter. Their office provides it because it's an accommodation for a disabled person. She types, and the lawyer can look on the screen and see what everyone is saying. So, you sort of are assuming something that isn't occurring.
Well, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, one final, final, last second. The COA process and our litigation with COA.
So, when are you a plaintiff then?
I am not a plaintiff in the COA litigation.
You're an intervenor.
I'm an intervenor in the planning board, in the litigation against the planning board, which is separate and distinct from the COA.
That's still costing the borough money because you're intervening. Go ahead.
It does not cost the borough money. Let's keep going, that's not the issue. And stop interrupting me with your false narrative.
You're not an intervenor?
Finally, the COA lawsuit. There is a plan that has been made available, which is what the borough filed. The borough filed it with the court on December seventh. I understand from sitting at the court hearing that that plan is now going to be approved or is presented for approval to the planning board in January, and ultimately, will come to the mayor and council for approval. I'd like to know, why is it going to these people after it's already been presented to the court as the borough's plan? What are they supposed to do with it if they happen to disagree with any elements of that plan? Or, since it's going to the new mayor and council, if those people disagree with it? How do you do this process backwards?
Members of the council, I'm advising you not to answer. There is pending litigation. The council has been fully apprised of every step in the affordable housing litigation. Thank you, Mrs. Geiger.
I just want to know if you lost in the court line.
Thank you, Mrs. Geiger.
Can I make one thing clear on this, on the payments?
No, let me just say that...
No, just real quick, no payments are sent... Anne Marie, please. No payments are sent out till we got the second signature. Ed came in, Ed was the second signature on most of the other ones. And the only one that was in question was yours and hers. I'm just letting you know, but everything...
So, Ed signed everything but hers.
Right. He brought it up, he discussed it with me, then I discussed it with the men. But, my point is this. The checks don't go out till the second...
You don't want people getting paid for their work?
So, that's my point. So, when I'm being told that I released all this two-point-nine million dollars, that is inaccurate.
No, I know, she's lighting her hair on fire for no reason. Go ahead. You had a question? Be quick, because we have to get to closed session.
Be as quick as possible. You can take your time. I'll pack a lot of food, every other resident's got it. Good morning, Captain Lee. Our support message to Wednesday, John Street and Englewood Cliffs, Mr. Devil to you.
I didn't hear what you said.
I think you're calling Mr. Devil to make a plea. I'd like to know...
I wouldn't do that, other people would.
No, I know. You don't have your computer.
I do, actually.
I think you should open it up. I'd like to know what action, if any, was taken on the geography properties on the south end of Englewood Cliffs.
Our zoning officer has been down there. What I recommended, Tony, is you, the zoning officer and myself, get together. I gave him all the information that you have concerns about, and he's addressing them. But, I think it would be a lot easier, in my opinion, myself, you and him, to get together.
Jamie, hold on a second. Hold on. He's not part of the government. You know what the issue is?
Yeah.
We've been coming back here. You guys have to solve that problem, okay? I don't want him in meetings with you guys. It makes no sense.
Okay.
All right? He's not part of the government, he doesn't work for us. He complained, deal with the problem. Because I have the same complaints. I don't like his style, I don't like what he stands for, but I have the same problem with that property, okay? And we keep doing this. We keep doing this, all right? It's a violation, find him. I don't care what you have to do, but fix it. All right, anything else?
Yes.
What else?
The breaking in Englewood Cliffs. Yeah, breaking on John Street. And I read your note that you ride around with a bicycle checking. So, it's over. There is no way that anybody can check who's on the block on certain streets. Because everybody parks on those streets, whether they're residents or non-residents. The people who came in here last meeting and asked about the brownstone, that parking on their street, nobody knows who parks there.
They're confusing issues.
No, 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 no. Because I have the same problem on John Street. Cars park all the way down the street. We don't know who's going into a deli or who's breaking into a house.
So, what's your suggestion?
If a business has a parking problem, then it valets. If a business has a parking problem, is there a journey?
That's not going to work.
And then, all in town and telling them we're going to do something and do nothing unless you do something.
Jamie, what's been done on Clifton Harris?
I spoke, no, excuse me, Paulie. I spoke with Lieutenant Hill. There's several things you can do, but are they favorable to do? You've got to remember one thing, these are public roads. And it's really tough to tell people they can't park in certain areas. We have an ordinance, from what I understand, I don't know how true this is. I spoke to the lieutenant, that you have to have permit by parking only in that area. Which means residential would have to get a permit, and only they can park on it.
What area?
I don't know what roads they are. I have to get the ordinance.
Lieutenant Hill is the former...
Yeah, so...
Before he became officer in charge, he is the...
And basically, what... Basically, what he said is that when you do a permit by ordinance for residents, you remember if they have any company over or anything like that, they could be ticketed as well. So, there's also concerns with that as well. Okay, Tony, I give you an answer, and it's like...
No, 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 that's not an answer. Because first of all, anybody can get residential parking and park on their street or park any street I propose in Englewood Cliffs.
Homeowners, property owners, property owners.